For the public, we're just having a bit of technical difficulty. Now we are recording. Thanks, Maria.
Okay, I do apologize for that. I'm going to jump right back into the presentation. All right. Thank you so much. Again, wanted to give an overview of the topics we'll be covering for this study session and looking forward to dialogue and any questions that you might have. So as we prepare to update you on the budget process, share our student enrollment projections, our second interim NYPD, our use or allocation of federal funds, share with you our staffing needs for 2021, 2022, based on what we've heard from our trustees and from our community, some different options, and then the timeline and next steps. So that's an overview of today's session. Next slide. We're focused again on our federal and state resources. So we'll be talking about our ESSER funds. And so that's our elementary and secondary school emergency relief dollars. We were first awarded an allocation in Feb- on February 10th of this year. And then we have received an additional allocation known as ESSER III, which is part of the 1.7 trillion American Rescue Plan Act from President that President Biden has launched. And that was awarded on March 10th. And then we have our reopening grants, and those are our in-person instruction grant and our expanded learning grant, otherwise known as our AB 86 funding. We're going to be sharing a summary of how we can use these funds. What must they be tied to? Some funding estimates and some things for us to consider. Next slide. So as we begin an overview of school finance, I'm going to turn it over to interim associate superintendent Norma Gonzalez.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, President Pizzotti, trustees, superintendent Hildreth, colleagues and community. Basically, we're, as Dr. Hildreth mentioned, the first of the seven bullets that we're going to consider or review this evening is the overview and understanding California school finance. This is mostly as a reminder, because as we've presented back in February, these slides were there for us to consider. But it's always important, because this all falls into the budget process throughout the year, which of course falls in alignment with the state standardized accounts code structure or SACS reports. Next slide, please. And basically, what that means is this timeline is still applicable, even though we are working under some specialized funding or state pandemic funding. And we'll go into a little bit more of that later. But these are the general timelines that we're still in alignment with. And I will actually kick this remaining part of the overview of the budget to our Director of Fiscal Services, Kylie Lane.
Thank you, Norma. Next slide, please. So many of this is already stuff that you've actually heard at the second interim report that we did in March. We actually have this. So the LCFF funding was an entitlement of the state funding moving from the revenue limit structure into the LCFF. So it's a tool that we use, put out by FICBAT. It has the dashboard data, and it converts everything into our state funding. It gives us our EPA. It shows us what our supplemental concentration grants will be. And that's all based off of the ADA and the enrollment that we put into the document. So it helps with our projections, and it gives us our UPPs, or unduplicated percentage amount, based off of our free and reduced, our low income, and then our EL students. So in our district, if you have, we are currently at 67, 68%. So with a district that's over 55%, you do get the additional funding of the concentration grant. So in the next slide, you'll see the breakout of the current year allocation. And this was all presented at second interim and will be updated again. There hasn't been a new tool that's been put out, but I expect that once they do the May revise, an updated spreadsheet will come out, and then we'll update that as far as for the adopted budget, add in our new projections for the 21, 22, and then it'll project out. This is the revenue side of it. And then, of course, we'll have our expenses that we'll have against this and then show you kind of our bottom line to see where we're actually at. This is just the unrestricted side. So this is the state aid. We have our property taxes in there. The in-lie property taxes is the negative amount that actually we pass through to our charters. And then the percentage of our supplemental concentration, our unduplicated percentage number. So as you see in our 22, 23 year, we talk about that cliff, which, when we look at our enrollment numbers, our ADA, this is the area that we are most concerned about. And I'll kind of get into that in the next slide here. This isn't a new enrollment slide that we actually saw at second interim. So it's the same information that was presented at second interim, showing just the pots of the grade levels that we have from TK all the way up to 912. And then at the very top of each individual bar graph is it shows the charter, the Washington Middle College. Next slide, please. This is a really important slide, one of my favorites. And it was pointed out when I did a presentation just earlier this week, showing that in the 22, 23 year, when we talk about the cliff, that bar graph shows 50% doesn't mean we're getting 50% of the funding, but it's just kind of giving you an idea based off of our ADA. And as we're seeing it decline, the effects it has year over year and how we're actually funded. So the 1920 year ADA was about 7,200 for the district. So in 2021, we were held harmless, so we were funded at that same level. So in the 21, 22 year, it's going to look at the greater of the prior or the current. And because we were funded on the ADA of the 1920, we're still going to be funded at that level in the 21, 22 year. However, in the 22, 23 year, that's where we look at the greater of the prior or the current. And because in our prior, in the 21, 22, we'll see the effects of the decline in an ADA. So we'll be funded at that level, but we'll see that cliff based off of the decrease in ADA that we've seen over the last kind of three years. Next slide. These are the revenue sources that we do receive, showing kind of the expenses against the base, the LCFF funding, the supplemental piece, we have the federal, state and the local. So the items that I gave you in there is kind of the expenses that we have or what revenue sources actually are underneath those categories. And then based off of our second interim numbers, at the very bottom is the actual dollar amounts in each of those revenue sources. Next slide. This is also was presented at second interim, just giving you an idea of our current staff in the certificated and classified, seeing that the step-in column that we do project at 2% increase. And then the effects that the STIRS and PIRS has on the adjustments year over year and how they're either increasing or decreasing. Next year, we're actually going to see a slight decrease in STIRS. And then, of course, the net unrestricted salary that we'll see. So with an increase of close to $1 million just in salary with the PRS and STIRS, and then the stepping column. Next slide. This is a breakdown of exactly what the rate is in current year of the 2021 year. And then the proposed rate for the 21, 22 year. And then the net change with the adjustment that we'll actually see and how it will affect in the salaries. Next slide. The multi-year projection is also will be updated at adopted budget. When we do have the revenue sources, not much will change. This is on the unrestricted general fund side, so we don't see the restricted dollars in here. This is just LCFF revenue. We also have a mandate cost, and then we have lottery funds on the state side. And then the local, the local is, we have some lease that we receive in for our facility, facility uses, as well as this year, we have reimbursement for the buses that we purchased last year. So that was a reimbursement that we received in this current year. And our expenses, the net increase to the fund balance. And then, as we see in out-years, the effects of some of the costs that we have that are included in the 21, 2021 year that actually go over year over year. Also to note, in the 21, 22 year, that does not include the any enhancements to salary or benefits for what will be negotiated in the 21, 22 year. So that will change, of course, when we do the multi-year projection for the out-years at budget adoption. Next slide, please. The local reserves, we have the reserve for economic uncertainties. So it gives you the estimated fund balance June 30th with our increase, what we plan to end this year with, our estimated ending. We have the reserve of the 3%. And with the, we also have the board policy to maintain a 6% reserve. So the two of those combined together, and then the unassigned balance of the 17.9 million. Next slide. So some of the consideration concerns, we talked a little bit about this at second interim, just with the downturns, economics, the state level budget cuts, some of the declining enrollments and loss of the funding that we'll see, some of the unplanned expenses that we talk about. I know we have some roofing issues over at Yolo High School. The cash deferrals, not concerned so much this year. The governor's budget in January did state that they would do away with those for next year. I think that the ESSER funds, the revenues that we receive for the ESSER funds has helped us as far as the cash deferrals for this current year. Reinstate me, possibly reinstating the deferred maintenance that was cut when we did budget adoption last year. And of course, the impacts to negotiations, the debt service payments. We did have the AB 1290 RDA settlement, which has helped us in as far as offsetting those payments. But that is a concern as we look in out-years due to the what we have as far as leases, the, some of the developer fees, depending on development that we have in the surrounding city. And then, of course, we just received at the end of March that there's going to be an unemployment insurance rate increase. So we're currently at 0.05, and they're projecting it to be at 1.23. So there's been some concerns reported that some employees of the districts, not just ours, but I think across the state of California, have also been including, receiving the unemployment benefit. So they're, they did a calculation based off of that. So of course, they have to pass that percentage on to us until they reconcile that and get that back up to what it does. They'll put it back in the reserve account and then recalculate. But we will see the effects of that in next year, starting July 1st. So I did a quick calculation, and it looks to be about a half a million dollars just for next year. So, next slide. And I will pass this over to Norma.
Sorry about that. So yes, to break down the state and federal pandemic funding, funding that will apply to us in Washington Unified, the ESSER II, the estimated allocations, and these may be subject to change. But what is anticipated to be received regarding the ESSER II funds is 7.1 million. Currently, there are approximately 427,000 in expenditures already on the books. The spending deadline for that is September 2023, so we have some time to utilize those funds. The ESSER III, we are looking at receiving approximately 15.8 million. So far, none of that has been spent or expended. And we are required to set aside 3.2 million. And that, those fundings are set to expire or to be spent on September, by September 2024. The in-person instructional grant, we, the estimated allocation is 2.5 million. And as the ESSER III, we have not expended those funds and no required set aside for that. And the spending deadline is next year, August of 2022. And the expanded learning opportunity grant is anticipated at 5.4 million, zero expenditures at this point, and 517,000 to 119, I'm sorry, 197,000 is required as a set aside. And those fundings are also to be spent by August of 2022. Next slide, please. And as mentioned, the, did we skip a slide? I'm missing ESSER II. It jumped to ESSER III.
That's what it says in our document as well.
Okay, sorry about that. I've seen a slide that skipped. Sorry about that. So, yeah, so the ESSER III allowable uses, it does state that we are to, at least 20% must be used for learning loss mitigation measures, such as expanded learning programs and summer school. And of course, the plan for safe return to in-person instruction. Next slide, please. Okay, I was thinking I'd get the other one back. My apologies for that. Okay.
Is there a slide that we need to see?
Yeah, there is slide 20, which breaks down the allowable users for ESSER II. And I was going to briefly walk through.
Do you want to stop there and then share your screen?
It was emailed to us. I have it on my email, so the document, I know we need it for the public, but just to share with, for colleagues, it is whole, so I don't know why.
Okay. I can walk through. Actually, I'll read it if that's okay. Let me just read it.
Mario, can you advance to slide 23?
Oh, goodness. Okay, so sorry. Not sure how that happened. So, yeah, in essence, just to walk through, it is there for public and all to view. Just wanted to highlight a couple of the bullets, of course, is that the allowable uses are, of course, the coordination of preparedness and response efforts, providing principals and other school leaders with resources of their needs. Key one is purchasing educational technology for students and classroom instructors. I'll just whip through them. Summer learning and supplemental after-school programs for targeted students, mental health services and supports, maintain the operational, the operation and continuity of services and continuing the employment of existing staff, school facility repairs and improvements to reduce the risks of transmission, and also the inspection, testing, maintenance, et cetera, to improve our HVAC, which stands for heating, ventilation and air conditioning. Next slide, please. Or if you could go back to where it speaks to the reopening grants, which are under, as Dr. Hildreth and has been communicated, is under the Assembly Bill 86, the in-person instruction and expanded learning opportunity grants. And of course, school districts have no shortage of challenges with respect to safely reopening students, returning students, rather, to in-person learning communities with higher unduplicated pupil percentages are more prone to challenges. And also, the influx of funds requires careful consideration to make decisions in a manner that advances learning recovery while also considering long-term sustainability. That's part of this discussion this evening or this afternoon. And then also, it will be important to establish a student-centric framework, which includes all available dollars that it aligns with the local control and accountability plan, which is integral at this time of year as well, and integrates the input of all stakeholders. Next slide, please. So with regard to the in-person instructional allowable uses, this, for any purpose consistent with providing in-person instruction for any pupil participating in in-person instruction. This also includes for the COVID testing that we've been working very closely with our provider to get that launched, and we've already actually started the COVID testing prior, and we continue to move that forward. The cleaning and disinfecting, personal protective equipment, or PPE, as commonly used these days. Ventilation and other school site updates necessary for health and safety. Key pieces, salary for certificated and classified employees, providing the in-person instruction or services. And a key piece also is the social and mental health support services provided in conjunction with in-person instruction. Next slide, please. And with regard to the early expanded learning opportunity grant, what is allowed for this funding stream is to accelerate, I'm sorry, accelerate progress to close learning gaps, extending instructional learning time, professional development and supports for credit deficient pupils to complete graduation or promotion requirements, and to increase or improve their eligibility to attend college. Pupil support, such as mental health services, access to school meal programs, before and after-school programs. At least 85% of these funds must be used for activities to provide in-person. The remainder may be used for activities provided remotely. And a key piece here is that 10% of these funds must be used to employ paraprofessionals. And I know that Assistant Superintendent Moicic will provide more definition or more information regarding that. And then finally, next slide, please, for me, I mean, finally for me. The considerations and for the reopening funds. Reopening funds are restricted and one-time money. Avoid using the one-time funds for ongoing expenditures. This is very critical and something that we're all mindful of. And unfortunately, each resource has a different spending deadline, as I mentioned in one of the previous slides. So that's why it'll be really critical for us to earmark or to tag each of the expenditures so that they're allocated according to the provisions of the grants and so that we are in compliance of their guidelines. And then to each resource allocation is subject to change, and that's ever-changing as we live through this pandemic. So I will transition over to, as mentioned, Assistant Superintendent Moicic for the next slides.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Gonzalez. As we, as was just mentioned, 10% as a fiscal requirement must be spent on to hire paraprofessionals to provide supplemental instruction and support through the duration of this program with a priority for full-time paraprofessionals. The supplemental instruction support provided by the paraprofessionals must be prioritized for English learners and students with disabilities. So some of the considerations that we are looking at, that we've heard feedback on as our plan is being formulated, is hiring additional paraprofessionals, so additional FTE, also adding training for our paraprofessionals and purchasing additional technology equipment for our paraprofessional staff. An additional fiscal requirement is that the district may use up to 15% of its apportionment to increase or improve services for students participating in distance learning or to support activities and to prepare students for in-person instruction. So this is a place where we could consider using these funds to help with the startup of our Washington Unified Virtual Academy. It could also be used to help us with upgrading and expanding upon our FEV tutoring so that we could include more students that would be, have access to such tutoring. Another part of the fiscal requirements, as was heard, was that 85% of this apportionment for expenditures is related to in-person services. And that's identified by supporting seven supplemental instructional and support strategies, which I'll try to cover a little bit in these next slides. And it requires the district to use the funding for these purposes. Districts are not required to implement each supplemental instruction and support strategy, but districts are to work collaboratively with their community partners to identify the supplemental instruction and support strategies that will be implemented. So with the first strategy is it's extending instructional learning time to what is normally required and giving more instructional days or minutes to students. Could be summer school, could be different types of programs. So some of the things that we've been considering, of course, we've talked a lot about our summer boost, virtual acceleration, those programs. We've also talked and heard feedback on doing that during the regular school year. So not just doing, and not just adding minutes to the summer, but also doing that continuously into the school year with intercession or Saturday school and providing after-school programs, not just ones for academic purposes, but also ones that could utilize social, social emotional support, something similar to what we do with sports for learning on campuses. So those, those funds could be utilized to support those programs for after-school use as well. Slide. So a big part of this is to accelerate progress, to close the learning gaps. And that's through implementation, expansion or enhancement of our learning supports. So again, tutoring or one-on-one small group learning supports, such as FEV tutoring, could be considered for this funding. Any kind of learning recovery programs, materials designed to accelerate student academic proficiency. So a lot of the different instructional technology that we use. And of course, educator training is a big part of this. And not just training for the teachers, but professional development for our certificated, all our certificated, classified substitutes and additional for parents as well. All that can be extra training for all those groups. Another support strategy is to integrate student supports to address other barriers to learning, such as the provision of health, counseling or mental health services. And this could be an area of consideration where we increase our outreach personnel or our social worker personnel to our district staff. Parent universities, expanding upon, building upon, making those much more robust could be a possibility here as well, with a number of families who could use extra support. Community learning hubs that provide students with access to technology and high-speed internet and other academic supports, another big part, another big important strategy. So, you know, we could boost our instructional technology leaders, again, Virtual Academy, and do different, different facility additions that could enhance what we do with our students and community. Outdoor learning spaces could be a part of this. Again, a lot of different technology hardware improvements. So things that, Chromebooks that actually have hotspots built into them, which could be a lot more efficient than what we're using right now. Wi-Fi external access points around the campus so that a community could use those for accessing the internet. For example, some districts have had this, and maybe their outdoor spaces, not just in classrooms, they've had Wi-Fi external points that families could use. We're looking to add possible Chromebooks to our paraeducators or other technology, as was mentioned before. And in addition, some can, some feedback we've heard is about adding classroom LCD monitors, much like the ones you see in this room, as a learning enhancement as well. Another strategy is to add additional academic services for students, such as diagnostic or progress monitoring and benchmark assessments of student learning. So a big part of what these funds can do with us is help us expand and accelerate some of the things that we're already doing. So it's not just brand-new things, but also just adding and building on top of things that are already moving, that we're already moving forward on, such as professional learning communities. that are already moving, that we're already moving forward on, such as professional learning communities and MTSS. So these funds could allow us to expand upon the time that we're able to donate and/or give our staff to work on this. Addition, it could help us more broaden out iReady and our unit assessments that we're currently using. So it could provide the finances for the gift of time. So this is more about students' social emotional health needs in terms of training. So extra training for school staff on strategies, including trauma-informed practices to engage students and families in addressing students' social emotional health and academic needs. So again, the professional learning communities and MTSS systems that we have created could be broadened. And we see this as an opportunity that we could really put parent engagement and parent universities at an all-time level that we haven't had before. We could really expand upon what we've currently tried to do. Again, staff training, we've heard staff mention over and over again that they need training on these strategies. So we could put forward a much more robust training plan. And I think Superintendent Hildreth is going to go over the next slide.
Yes, thank you, Stan. Now we want to just share some considerations regarding adding staff for the 2122 school year. And we just want to highlight that some of the, we revised some of the numbers on the slide from what was sent or published in yesterday. So we will be updating that information as well. So just wanted you to know that we've made sure that everything is correct as we present. So starting with looking at our ELO-IPI funds, again, that's our extended learning opportunity and in-person instruction grants, otherwise known as how we use our AB-86 funds. So the first thing that was highlighted in the use of these funds is that at least ten percent had to be set aside for our paraprofessionals. So we're thinking is, as we focus on the needs of our students, and we really want to support our youngest learners, thinking about our students in K3, TK3, of how we can make sure we're providing that foundational level of support. So we're looking to add approximately eighteen paraprofessionals that would be dedicated to supporting our youngest, our primary learners, and especially looking to see if we can add some bilingual paraprofessionals as well, because we need to also support our English learners. That was another component of how our funds have to make sure we're targeting those needs. The set aside for our paraprofessionals was approximately five hundred and seventeen thousand, I believe. So this would be going above it just a bit, but that was what we needed to make sure we highlighted. And that's a number we think if we can have eighteen additional to what we already have in staff, that will really give us a large support for our students. The second use of these funds would be to add two outreach workers or outreach specialists to what we already have. And so what we did is really looking at our attendance data for the 2020, 2021 school year. We see that twenty, over twenty percent of our students were either severely chronic, had severely chronic absenteeism or chronic absenteeism. And when we broke that down, we saw that there were four schools that had the highest rates of high chronic absenteeism rates. They were Elkhorn at thirty-point-five percent, Riverbank at forty-three-point-three percent, Westmore Oaks at thirty-point-seven percent, and Westfield Village at twenty-one-point-eight percent. And so we believe that looking at not only this current school year's data, but looking at a trend over the last three years, these schools had significantly higher chronic absenteeism rates. So if we were to add additional outreach specialists, we could provide additional supports to those four schools especially, and can assist with our conferencing, our MTSS tier-one supports. And so currently, we have eight outreach specialists in the district. So this would be an additional two, which would give us a total of ten for the 202122 school year. And one of the outreach specialist positions would be specifically to focus on our homeless students, because that's another group that this funding is designed to support. We're getting additional funding for our homeless students. So if we really can use one of our outreach specialists to really work with those students and their families, we believe that that is an investment that will benefit our students. When we think of our social workers, we have heard from the community, we've heard from the trustees about how great that need is. And we know that our current, we currently have five social workers. And so adding an additional three would give us eight, and it would help our current social workers not be as stretched. Additionally, we are working, Dr. Phillips and his team, and he's our Director of Family and Student Support Services, is working also with our higher institution partners to have some interns for social work, to work with our social workers. So we're really trying to not only bring in more of our own staff, but utilize additional staff from the community to help our students. So that's what come to one million seventy-nine thousand dollars of the AB-86 funding. Then we looked at the additional need for intervention specialists. And we noticed that in 201819, we had one intervention specialist at every site. But we recognize over the past couple of years, we've had to take budget cuts to keep us, keep our budget aligned. So what we want, as we talk about adding staff, we also are thinking about, these are the purpose of the additional funds that we're getting to allow us to bring some of this support back using different funding sources. And we know that the needs of our students have increased due to the pandemic and adding these additional specialists, again, would allow us to provide more support to our students in our needy schools, especially in our northern areas. So we currently have three intervention specialists. And so if we have an additional four, that would give us seven intervention specialists and really could focus support based on our data and student needs. And looking at all of our funding sources, we would recommend that this could be used with our Title I or Title II dollars for that. Going on until our unrestricted general fund, and looking at a support for our YOLO Education Center Administrator. And really, one of the only administrator positions we're considering is with the many needs of our students at, with all of the programs at YOLO Education Center. And we know that these students are in the most need of direct intervention. These are our students who are really struggling with either academics or attendance or behavior, and have and need additional social emotional support, or they have individualized instructional plans. So if we provide an additional administrator to oversee these areas, that will allow us to utilize our current support with Dr. Jay Burns to become more focused in providing direct support for our district initiatives, such as our focus on equity, PBIS, school safety, athletics. And he's going to oversee now our ACES program or after-school. So because we really want him to provide that support overall, if we were to have another administrator to really oversee the more day-to-day at YOLO, that would be helpful for our goals. Using our ESER funds, we're looking at a teacher on special assignment, really focused in the area of instructional technology. And as we've seen since the hit of COVID-19 has hit us all, it has really focused on the use of instructional technology, not only for our students, but for our staff and our teachers as well. And so the need to integrate technology into the curriculum has just increased. And so we currently have an instructional coordinator who has been supporting that work. So as we know that the use of technology is going to continue, and we're looking to support our students through a virtual academy. We want to make sure that our teachers have the support they need to make all of our uses of technology and instructional programs virtually the best. And so we believe by adding an instructional technology TOSA, they'll be able to assist with our grade-level teams, assist with the many new instructional programs we've had, added to our teaching tools over the last two years, because I know that previously in the seventeen-eighteenth school year, there was an instructional technology TOSA. But again, so we cut when we need, but we're really looking at these funds and the purpose of how do we provide those additional supports. We're looking, our recommendation is for this particular position to come out of our ESER funds. And our ESER dollars are the dollars that we must expend by 2024, September of 2024. And then lastly, we want to recommend an additional program specialist for our English learners to support our current English learner coordinator. Our district is home to one thousand two hundred and thirty-five English learner students, and a hundred and fifty-nine of them are considered as newcomers. Newcomers are those students who have been in the U.S. fewer than three years. As we have looked at this data, sixty-eight of those students have arrived in the U.S. and joined our district just since January of 2020. So since we've got a hundred and fifty-nine newcomers, sixty-eight in really over the last year, right before COVID hit. And what we've learned is that these students, especially the sixty-eight who have joined, have never attended school in the U.S. in the typical way. And so they need additional support, not only for instruction, but interaction and navigating learning English, navigating learning American schooling, and then since Jan or March of last year, navigating all of that in a remote environment. So they have some very specific needs, as well as our additional over one thousand English learners. So with one coordinator and her team, they're fabulous. But if we really are about accelerating student outcomes, we have to say where is additional support needed? So if we add this EL program specialist, it can really focus on our newcomers, and they will, this position could support our dual immersion program. Because on the other spectrum, we have students who we are focused on the biliteracy and the bilingualism and the multiculturalism. And those, that program has very specific needs. And as it expands, and our goal is to have that expand through K-12, we know there are going to be specific needs as the program grows. So to provide additional support to our English students learning English and our students who are English, have English proficiency for the most part, but are second-language learners and learning Spanish, this could support that position. Again, using the ESER dollars that would, that must be expended by September of 2024. So in that particular budget, that would be an additional two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So when we look at the total for added personnel using the different funding resources, that comes to one million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. We also have additional needs that we might want to consider in terms of additional maintenance support as we bring students back on, expanding, making sure that the sanitation, the health needs that we have ours for our custodial staff, in particular, to be able to keep our campuses clean, are things that we need to consider. Making sure our campuses remain in good condition are things we need to consider. And also, as we've had an increase in bringing more staff in, that's impacting our human resources. And although we are seeing a wonderful decline in our data in terms of COVID, it has not gone away. We are still in the middle of a pandemic. And so we still, in terms of our district responsibility, need to ensure that we have a COVID-19 focus in terms of our testing, in terms of if there are cases for staff or students, that we're still doing that. And so adding additional support in HR to maintain all of these different areas of our human resources and human capital is something that could be of consideration as well. So that's just giving you an overview of what we're thinking staffing-wise at this point. Next slide. And I'm going to turn it over to Kylie at this point.
Yeah, so this is our budget development timeline. So it gives you an idea of kind of where we're at, we're at the beginning of May. So we're kind of hopefully wrapping up things, negotiations, so we can start rolling over Position Control and bring to you the adopted budget for the LCAP and then the public hearing, the first meeting of June. And then the second meeting is where we would adopt both. And then based off of the May revise, in August, if there's significant changes, we'll go ahead and bring you back the forty-five-day revise with any budget adjustments that are needed, if there's changes to the revenue or any, you know, significant changes. Next slide, please. So this just kind of gives you an idea. I brought this at second interim. We've already made adjustments at our second interim based off of what the governor's January budget proposal was, and made the changes for the multi-year. In the budget development process is where we include the site department budgets, where we do incorporate all of the LCAP expenditures, make sure that we have those in line for the supplemental concentration, any of those that fall in that area. And then, of course, in May, we're looking forward to the governor's revise so we can make those last-minute changes before we bring to you the budget in the LCAP at the very first meeting of June. And then, of course, the budget adoption at the very last meeting of June. So with that, I think if there's any questions, I think as the next slide, we will be looking forward to answering those for you.
Thank you, team. And so now, this is the time where we are looking forward to your feedback, questions, things that we considered that you have questions on, or things that you have been thinking about that we haven't considered. This is the time for us to have this dialogue.
All right, thank you. We have one public comment that I see on this agenda item. I'm trying to find the disclaimer to read. Huh? Okay. We have one person to make a public comment. Carrie Corwith, are you still on?
Yes, I've allowed Carrie the ability to speak. Your microphone is unmuted, and you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Superintendent Hildreth. I would just caution you to, as we add positions into our budget, that we are still not in a good financial state if we look in the future. And so when we did the budget cuts two years ago- And so when we did the budget cuts two years ago, I remember some board members that are still currently on the board asked our CBO what his opinion was, moving forward, you know, we did the budget cuts now, now what, what's your opinion of how do we keep out of the red? How do we, how do we keep, you know, our budget in a good spot? And his, his answer was do not add anything back to the budget unless you take something away. Kind of keep it where it's at unless we had new dollars. I understand that some of this is new, one-time money that we have to use for COVID. I support that fully. I would just look at the, the budget items that we're looking at that are coming out of general fund or Title I, which are ongoing expenses. And we've already added several positions back that we laid off two years ago. And so that concerns me. And so we would, you know, it, it appears to me that we, we did cuts to help our budget and now we're kind of laxing on that. And we're bringing positions back that, that we had cut. For example, the Director of HR. I know that we've, we've renamed it to a different name, but it's still basically the same position. And the receptionist position. And I can't remember, I don't remember, I'm sorry, the name of the position. It was testing in EL that Gwen did, was brought back after the budget cuts. So just hoping that we'll kind of be cautious and make sure that we're spending, we're not overspending our money. And then look in a couple of years and have to do all these layoffs again, because that's not, not a fun thing for anybody. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to board questions and comments. Let's start with trustee Kirby Gonzalez. Do you have any questions or comments?
Sure, I have, I think with presentations this long, it's helpful to maybe stop between presenters and do a couple clarifying questions because it is a, you know, robust discussion. I appreciate it. Thank you for putting this together. So I'm going to go all the way back, Director Lane, I think actually this might be Assistant Superintendent Norma Gonzalez, but my question is about the S R 3 and expanding learning grant. It was said that we had to have a certain part of money for the set aside. Can you just explain to us what set aside means?
I, I can answer that. Yeah, so that 20% is actually targeted directly towards learning loss mitigation. So the guidelines for S R 3 follows the exact same guidelines for S R 2, but it just has that kind of caveat of the 20% that is directed towards learning loss mitigation.
Okay, so for set aside, it's kind of like a, I don't know, like a categorical, it just has to go to this place.
Yep, it's still under the same funding. We don't track it any different. We just have to make sure that we could explain that that portion of that 20%, when we do our reporting, is directed towards learning loss.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you. And then the unemployment wage increase, is that a general fee for, you know, businesses and organizations in our state? Or do we specifically have employees who are unemployed in Washington unified currently?
So I actually just got that publication today from EDD. And so I was reading over it because I thought, well, that's really interesting. For the longest time, we've been 0.05%. And then out of nowhere, we got notification that they were doing an increase. That was, let's see, where did I? I thought I put it in here. But it was, it was across the state. So it was, it was all school districts. They were, it was brought to their attention that there were some claims for staff that were employed and still employed, but were also collecting unemployment. So they're running kind of an audit. They did their basic calculation just based off of claims that they, they paid out. And so when they do that calculation, that's where the, the increase, the huge increase came of the 1.23. So they are planning to do an audit, but because they're at this point as far as having to start the year in July with that percentage, they're going to go ahead and charge that when we do our quarterly reporting. So we have to report all of our wages and that's just automatically what you pay kind of off the top. And then they'll kind of recalculate it when they complete their audit and then it'll go back into the reserve account. And then, of course, the calculation will happen again. And then whether we get reimbursed from that at a later time, it's just kind of, that was the publication. It came out like March 31st, so it's fairly new. That's really all we have as far as the, the increase at this point. But I, I think they will eventually reconcile it when they look to see all of the claims that were paid out and then do a reassessment.
And I'll piggyback on that response, trustee Kirby Gonzalez. We have not laid anyone off to where they would be qualified for unemployment insurance, but it is a statutory. Yeah, I'm sorry. I hope you can hear me better. My apologies. It is a statutory deduction that we do have to pay as Kylie mentioned, but as an organization, we have not laid anyone off to where they would therefore qualify or apply for unemployment insurance.
Can I ask a clarifying question just for the public? So EDD has been in the news. There have been false claims. So if you're reading, if I'm understanding the memo directly, we're actually bearing the brunt of said discrepancy until they reconcile their EDD claim?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that that's the way that EDD is balancing the book.
Yeah.
On, out of our general funds.
Yep.
Dollars. Okay.
And it's, I think it's all for school, like across the entire state of California.
Correct. Yeah, no, my, my husband does EDD claims all day long. So it just, I just want to be clear that it's not that we laid off people because we hadn't. But this is actually, it's been in the news that EDD, there's lots of claims, lots of people who don't, aren't ineligible that are claiming and that to reconcile and balance the books at the state level. It seems like employers, including us, have increased, have to pay that until they reconcile their book.
Yep.
And the state does something. I just want to be clear about that. Okay.
Yeah. They call it the School Employee Fund, so the S E F participants. So I'm assuming that is everyone. This actually went to the county and then the county just sent it over to us today. So I was just kind of reading this and saying, okay, it makes sense. It's just there, it was brought to their attention. They're investigating all these claims and they plan to do a collection back, I guess, but it could be years. I, I really don't know how long it could be for us to actually see the effects of the refund. I mean, that's a huge jump going from 0.05 to 1.23.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, absolutely. And, and then because there was an extra additional payment on unemployment, we're at, they're having to
Yep.
make whole that fund.
Yep.
And so, okay, I'm not, that's a, not a you issue, that's a state advocacy issue.
Okay, thank you though. I appreciate. Yeah, I have more. But I will try to be concise because I know everyone does. And then when we look at the data, which I appreciated, I know you showed the graph before of enrollment from year over year, it would be helpful if as a board, we could see the enrollment from grade to grade last year to this year. So, you know, September last year to September this year. And then we could know, is there a particular grade where we lost more students than another? And because I know some of our enrollment decline is across the state in terms of just are there, you know, the little kindergartners coming to us or not. Also, it would be helpful is I know that this is not needed for private schools and charters, but when people request out of district, just if we are keeping record of that to maybe share, you know, anecdotally, you know, we're losing people who are moving out of state or our families, you know, went to this program or that, it is helpful to know that data as well. Not necessarily right now, but something important to, to I think, provide us as we look at who to target. And I was happy to see the specific piece talking about our students experiencing homelessness because I poured over the data of who has stayed virtual. And that's one of our highest numbers is students who are experiencing homelessness. And so making sure that they are targeted and that we are, you know, seeing them and what their needs are, I think is, is very important. A question about the adding outreach specialists in terms of attendance. What does that look like in terms of just driving over their house and picking them up? You know, I'm thinking of one day I was at Riverbank for a tour and the principal said, you know, I can't, can't talk to you right now because I'm going to go pick up a kid and make sure that they're at school. And that is the priority, right? It's just getting our kids to school. So sometimes that's what's needed and I don't know. You know, do we have any way to do that in terms of really helping families with our bus drivers or anyone else just physically get to school? Is there an apartment complex where we're noticing that there are fewer students coming? Where we can add a stop on a bus route? I think that that might be important to look at when you talked about Elkhorn, Riverbank, Westmore Oaks and Westfield. I know Westfield, for example, and they added a bus route during, right now during COVID, but that was not always there. That's one of our furthest attendance boundaries because students walk down from the end of West Capital. And so I think that might be an important thing to look at of how we can support getting them here. The other piece with that is can you tell us what is the requirement for a para educator in terms of people applying? What, what do they need to have?
In terms of. Yes, I can answer. Yeah. And when it was part of the NCLB, which is a No Child Left Behind, and of course it switched over to the ESR, 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 forgive me, there's so many acronyms, but in essence, it's, it was equivalent and I believe it still is. 30 college units, you know, above a high school, a proficiency test. And I think that there was one other qualifier and I will get that for you in a moment. But it was three items, meaning the 30 units above high school, a proficiency test. And let me get that for you. Sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head.
That's okay. And Dr. Hildreth, is your proposal that all of these are temporary positions? Or what does this look like in terms of when they go out into, you know, the job description posting? What does this look like? There's quite a few positions here.
So we want to be very specific in terms of the funding source, especially with the funding for AB 86, recognizing that that, that is a one-year expand by August 2022. So be very clear in that. Funding source, we're also for the ESR funds, which are good until 2024. We're also looking again at how do we bring an intensity to support our students? And the other portion of the funding outside of positions is a lot of support for professional development and training for all staff, not just teachers, but for classified, because it's about building capacity to support our students. So we need to give additional people support, human capital support right now. And I think of it as a scaffold. So we're providing this support and we know that we eventually are going to have to take some of these scaffolds away because of the funding is not there. But in the meantime, on a parallel track, we are providing those supports. So we recognize outreach. There'll be attendance strategies for an outreach specialist, yes, going to homes. But we'll also be talking, what does attendance strategies look like at the school site? What can we do in terms of making sure students are coming? How our school site, our, our teachers being able to give updates to parents and checking in with kids, student-led conferences, there are so many things we can do. So it is looking at people for a short term. Also, if we are successful in really providing the supports our students will need and making sure we're getting out to our community about the type of support that we're providing, we're looking to bring students back into the district as another part of the strategy to bring some of that enrollment up. Because we recognize that there are lower birth rates, that's impacting enrollment. The cost of living in California, that's impacting enrollment. So those are two big areas that are impacting us, but that's not every area. And so we're doing a really good job of supporting students. So we want to get that word, word out while we're building a virtual academy to tap into an additional program that will provide for our students. So that's really how we're looking at it. But it, we want to be very clear when we are posting positions where the funding source is coming from. So people are aware and we, we don't want things to be a surprise. We are doing our best to, to avoid a whole layoff time. That's not good for anyone in, in the system. But we know that these funds, these allocations are very specific for how they should be used, what they should be used for. And we recognize that we're definitely not looking to put the majority of monies in salaries, but we know that some of that does need to be targeted for salaries.
So to follow up, I'm sorry, Sarah, on, on how this is flown or advertised, these positions would be two-year limited term. Is that the like verbiage being used? They're limited terms. So when you're advertising for them, the people that are, just to be transparent, that are, you know, applying for these jobs know that they are, you know, one or two-year limited term position.
That is correct. However, that, we're, the school districts are still not exempted from the statutory timeline of notification for reduction in force or layoff. It is a different timeline for both certificated as for classified. But although we can earmark and tag them, we're, we still need to follow the timelines of notification, which would come to the board as resolutions for those layoffs or the reduction in force. So, so although yes, we do notify the associations of any soft funded or one-time monies. But yeah, that, that's critical for that consideration.
Thank you. And I'm almost done. So I think that as we look at this in terms of just really who, who are these people that we can get in for a year or two? Looking at, you know, we already have such fantastic staff. This is not work full-time. You know, you could, maybe some of our incredible crossing guards could then pop over and, and work with students in intervention or some of our yard supervisors. And so I think working there as well with the staff that we already have. We heard about librarians, I think is an important piece. People who are not working full days, who maybe can help with some of this temporary. And our parents and families and grandparents who are retired. We have so many good resources that way, who maybe would temporarily be willing. And then when I see social workers, which I know are hard to hire, especially if it might be temporary, and I think about our outreach specialists, my caveat to that would just be looking really closely at our job descriptions and our oversight and making sure that if my student attends one school, that they are getting the same type of quality support as if they were attending another school, to make sure that we are providing groups and working with kids and give really, meeting them where they are. And their hours too, I know sometimes end at the end of the day versus being able to run a small group at the end of the day. So I just want to make sure we're adding positions like that to where that they're being really utilized in the most effective possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Burner.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you for this. Lots of information for me to digest. Where was my first one? Oh, I, with the ADA, I know we talked about, I think it was 1920, having 7,200 students district-wide. But do we know how much of a decline we've seen due to COVID? Have we set a specific number? And does that? And does that, what does that look like for other districts and or states? If we can even get our hands on that information?
So I haven't compared to to other districts. Um, but I think it's just very common in the state of California that we are all seeing a decline enrollment. Even though we're not being funded or um on this year's um ADA, we're still taking record of our P eight or our P two, which is month eight um attendance and ADA. So uh when we looked at it last, it was um around seven thousand fifty ADA at P two, which would what we would normally be funded on. So there is a significant drop um that we've seen since last year. Um, and and so we know it's going that direction. Um, and I know surrounding districts are experiencing the same thing. I just haven't asked them exactly what percentage of decrease they've seen. Um, I can get that information for you, though, if you'd like it.
Just curious, I'm curious about what it will look like for everyone long-term, and it's total speculation, but um. And then as a new person, I, this may be a dumb question, but I'm not sure. I understand the step column, step slash column um slide and what that is actually communicating to me.
Yes, so um staff, like if we hire um a staff, like say they come in at step three um based off their experience, then the following year they would move up a step. So that's about five percent step over step. But then we have some that don't move on the salary schedule depending on if they're in longevity or if they're um in a range of six, eight. The so it just depends on uh where they are on the salary schedule. So on average, we use two percent.
Thank you.
And I'll add a little bit to that as well, because there's different structures of salary schedules. For classified, it's basically the one step and column. But for certificated, uh when they turn in additional units, they would advance uh on step and column depending on where they are with their units, meaning their coursework um and also their years of service. So it's twofold for certificated and for classified, it's basically a one step for for classified movement. But the calculation of the those step and column increases are what are have to be factored in into the budget.
Thank you. That's helpful. Um, trustee Kirby Gonzalez asked about the unemployment question. Sorry, trying to be quick. Um. And then I was thinking of uh, uh, I wrote it down. We were talking about uh targeting our homeless and then, you know, having these positions be positions that are um potentially limited in time and um and I just am curious, do we have ideas about sort of, like, I think that uh it was a really good idea to talk about staff that could qualify for some of these positions that might be interested in it? And are there like professional development, you know, sort of increased due to COVID professional development? How could we help implement these with our staff that we're actually looking at right now? I'm I'm just curious, because I see this being, these all being long-term struggles. I know, you know, with the DI program, we're talking about how to get those kids caught up. And so that's just a small number of the population. What about kids with all of the different struggles? And there are so many that we could start listing now, but, you know, we all know socioeconomic um struggles that could prevent kids from getting to and fro. And then we have the the um emotional, um, you know, the mental health struggles. Um, and I see that not just being like a one-year fix. So my concern is like, we get a great social worker in for a year or two. And then, you know, do we have these actual PD programs where we could all take part? Like the trauma-informed learn um learning is something that I've always been interested in and would love to participate in that. So I think as a community, we can do a lot if we have these programs in mind. So I was just curious to see if there's anything that we are actually thinking of at this point. But I don't know who to ask that to, and you may not have that right now. Um, but it would be.
Take a little, I'll try my best.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so we definitely um are looking at it from, there there is the personnel part of it. Um, but there's also the systems part of it. And so um part, a a big part of this is to make sure that we put systems in place so that they can be sustained. Um, the nice thing about training is that um you can, good training can have a va- a long-term value. And so we definitely see a lot of this being used utilized that way, but not just training for staff, but training for parents. Also involving ourselves with the community and setting up partnerships with the community that can be long-lasting. And so um all all those things can have a long-term effect um in terms of what we're trying to do. Um, but person, you know, pe- people power is important, particularly when, you know, a big, a big part of this fund is to accelerate and expand upon. And so, uh, you know, the idea is that um we're coming off a tough year. And so to restore our students and and staff to a place where um, you know, to where to to strengthen um where we came from in such a, you know, a tough year. So that that that's the short-term part of it, to get everybody to, um, and that's why we use words like acceleration and expand. Um, but there is a long-term component, and we're all interested in having long-term success. And, you know, and that was why, you know, Dr. Hildreth mentioned, you know, the primary literacy as being a target. Uh, because we all know the value of what that will bring long-term if you can put things in place um at the primary gr- grade. So so we're definitely trying to target um the areas that we feel like are weaker and may need to be over-deployed. Um, you heard Dr. Hildreth talked a little bit about our um north-end schools and some of the chronic absenteeism. And so um at some point, when you have a bigger gap, you have to over-deploy.
Right.
Uh, there there are times that you have to over-deploy. And so that's kind of part of what we're trying to do here is to deploy as maximum as we can. And as we um narrow the gaps, um, you know, we can, we can look to see if we have to draw back in certain places. But but it's also an investment. I think that's the other word we have to look at here is investment. Um, because um that that can, if we do a great job here, we could eventually boost our enrollment. Um, if we have great results, if we are able to support a wide range of students at a better level, um, that could boost our enrollment and allow us to um keep uh many of these positions uh for for a longer period. So there's no guarantee that these have to go away in one year. Um, it's just that we have to be transparent about the funding. Um, many of our positions in the district office or other support staff were based on temporary funding. Uh, when I first came to the district office as a TOSA, once upon a time, um, I was told that this is a grant. And uh and the idea was at that time is that this is a grant. But if it's effective and what you're doing is effective and our principals and our schools see value in this, then we could keep, uh, we can keep moving forward. And so we're hoping that that's what happens here as well. And um it is very important to point out, and it was pointed out by one of our callers, some of these are restored. Um, some of these positions were already in the district office, in the district level, not at just in the office, but at the sites. And so uh they were taken away from uh from our schools. And um looking at it from the programmatic point of view, um, I can tell you that it's been difficult for our staff, even with uh putting COVID aside, um, having uh that that's been a challenge um in 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 terms of the teaching and the learning and the service that we provide for our students and families. Um, and so so that's all, that's all a piece of it right now. But um there, it's not all just people, it's also systems, it's also training. Um, all that, all that goes part of the equation so that we can have a long-term effect.
And we have already started looking for all of these people, because I know space and staffing has been an issue in um some spaces. So we've already kind of, I know we've got lots of funds, but it might be harder to find the bodies. So are we starting to look for those quality people already?
I think that's something we would um do after we've um finalized what our plan is and 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 do this part of the process.
And we have ideas, I guess, because I think my concern is just even thinking of like where every, where is everyone going to come from? And I love that we are doing this, obviously, now we have to. But, you know, um, I want to be sure that we're.
I could add a little bit to that. We're in the thick of recruitment season right now already um in HR. So what we've done is, and thanks to for the board, the trustees to approve the sub-rate. We did put that in our frontline system so that when they log in, they knew right away that the sub-rate was increased. Um, and we are already um attending virtual job fairs. So we are starting to pull feelers out there because we do realize that, because we have the standard recruitments right now for the next year for the employees that have already submitted their resignation and retirement. So we're starting to look at the pools of applicants that we have. So yes, in answer to your question, it's even though we don't have formal authority to increase the FTE at this point, but we are looking at how we can make sure we source um adequately for next year.
And just to clarify, I only ask that because I imagine I'm a hundred percent positive, we're not the only district in this position. So, you know, grabbing first would be awesome. Um, and my last question is just about the virtual academy. I've had people ask, is this something that, I don't know that we've been clear, that is it something that we're looking at doing? You know, long-term, are we test-running this? Or are we actually, I mean, what, there isn't, there doesn't seem to be a lot of clarity in the community. And and I get a lot of questions about that, so I just want to kind of get.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, it it is new, so I think whenever you have something new, it kind of comes out as a little bit of a novelty uh for 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 a lot of our families. Um, but it is something that we believe um can be a long-term benefit to our community. Um, and that's why we put it as a CDS code, that's why we applied for a CDS code, because we do think it can be a long-term bene- benefit. So uh that that's, that's the direction we're headed as as a long-term benefit. And partially because we knew that um there are people who really like the virtual environment.
Yeah.
We we hear it from families all the time. There are some families that really do like it. It's it's for um, it it serves their needs. And um, you know, we also know that not every uh student is exactly wanting to be in school confined to time and space, the way school is traditionally set up.
Right.
We know that some students struggle with that.
Yep.
And and that, and this could be a benefit to them. So we are um right now sending out cards to all our virtual families. We think those would probably be the most likely people interested and people that are choosing virtual now because perhaps um perhaps COVID fears could be other reasons. So we're we're sending out, we're sending out cards to all those people, postcards. Uh, but we're also, I wanted uh the board to know also that we're sending out those uh postcards to everybody we know that's ever left our district uh for for whatever reason. Um, and anybody that we know that might be in this city that is a student. You know, we we don't know who all those folks are, but we, um, anybody who we know in that area, we want them to know that we have this option available. Yeah, we want them, we want them to know that we have this option uh for for families now. And so we think, and we have actually had people solicit who are homeschooled uh previously, this instead of being in our district. So we've had some people do that, although the vast majority, of course, will be our students, uh our current students who who select this. So we we do, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we we see this as a very viable, long-term program that can be successful for our community, much like uh virtual academies in other districts um that were established prior to COVID. Uh, there were many, there was many virtual academies already established. Uh, and so we think it can be, it it can be a benefit for everybody here.
Great, thank you.
Just I want to add to that with the virtual academy. In terms of long-term, we're looking at this, yes, as a, as a school, again, CDS code, it has been approved. But really, when we look um in in surrounding areas and and most are having some type of virtual component, but they're looking at it more like an independent study program. We're looking at this as a virtual school where there are live teachers. It's not just doing independent study work and you come in each week and somebody checks your work. So we're really looking at a different model. And so that is something that we want to also highlight for families of what's the difference from what they might be hearing from other districts of what's being provided. I think that's what makes our our planning for the virtual academy really unique.
Good, because I think my concern, and another concern of mine is that, you know, with the virtual academy, you you have to assess the at-risk children as well in a school classroom is a really good way to do that. So I have this sort of nagging thought that are we going to need different staff or more staff for um, you know, those assessments and then to support those children. Um, I think, you know, a lot of us, we see, we see the the at-risk children here, but maybe we don't experience it ourselves or don't have careers where we work with those those students. And so it's good for us as a community to understand that and then how we can support them as well. So thank you.
Yeah, and and just um, I know that uh my, our director of curriculum and instruction, Mr. Matt Ainsworth, has been leading work groups in this area. And um part, part of the program design includes in-person availability. So it's uh the, in terms of check-ins, uh coming in for special assessments, um extra help. So it does involve in-person, um, i- it's not completely virtual, although instruction is primarily virtual.
Yeah.
There's still in-person components and connections uh available to students.
Perfect, thank you.
Can I go? Can you guys hear me? Awesome, awesome. Um, I I guess I'll start off with with what uh Sarah, Sarah uh was was speaking about, um, really expanding and rethinking positions on campus now. I I would totally agree with that. I know uh about three years ago, I know Elk Grove was really working on getting their campus monitors to become para educators. And and now that we're looking at the needs, almost adding every hour or or almost project-based, right? Like like these projects end at some point. Um, but adding more hours to some of our staff that are looking for more hours, that are looking to uh support, you know, whether it be the campus monitors or 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 para educators that are looking for extra hours. I think it's a great opportunity to start thinking about um expanding on either initiatives that that we need or or their position, um, whether that that may be even virtual hours. Like, right, maybe, maybe it's four hours on campus, but then they also support virtually. You know, they can, they can kind of um almost expand their time of of support um and not just physical time. Um, a question I did have is, are we saying that our students are going to, from this point forward, ha- continue to have Chromebooks and Wi-Fi moving forward, whether they're virtual or in-person? Because I think as people, as adults, I mean, we we're in this world where, you know, we uh okay, I wasn't, yeah, yeah, got it, got it. So so with that, obviously comes upgrades and and all of that, so there's going to be funding behind that. Um, so that I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad that's a thing.
Yes.
Um, another question is, because I grew up, this is my lens, uh as a migrant family, uh, travel was was a thing. Um, and I missed, I would miss about a month and a half of school um right around November, December, January. Um, so are are some, are there are students that are planning on coming in person? Are they able to jump online or virtually to not miss, to not, to not miss the attendance? And help us in almost, how do we promote? If if the answer is yes, how do we then encourage that or promote that so that it could feel and and students could remember to put school first, even though they travel? Because a lot of times it's with families not traveling for an entire year. I'm sure with having property, having, you know, things that they have to take care of, I can see um our families sharing uh this year. Um, are we planning on on allowing them to 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 maybe jump on the virtual option uh while they're 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 out on on a trip?
They they probably wouldn't want to just jump back and forth between the virtual academy and their in-person. That would probably not be the way to go. Um, but typically, when families go, um, we don't necessarily recommend families leave for that long. Uh, but we know that it occurs for a lot of cases. Um, I've done it myself.
We did it every year.
But I I know the journey, but we don't necessarily encourage families to do that, you know, overall. But when it does happen, because we know it happens, we do want to support those students as best we can. And um typically, um, you know, independent study contracts are are done with many of those students. And um one of the nice things, you know, we don't have to, even though we're uh going to traditional in-person instruction next year, we don't have to take away all the benefits of technology that we had. And so um one of the things that we're looking at is using these funds to support something a little different in terms of intervention, that there could be a virtual component to supporting intervention. So typically, in previous So typically in previous years, we'd have our intervention sessions after school and students would stay and teachers would stay with them. But we are looking to see if we can build a virtual capacity for intervention. And so if, we could possibly try to hook up students that are in that situation to get that support. You know, depending on where they are in terms of hours, you know, that some, some people go very far away. It's not even in this hemisphere. So, so there's some difficulties with that and some challenges.
Okay.
We definitely, we do want to, we do want to support our students and we can add, because of the virtual component, there are some possibilities that didn't exist before. But we wouldn't want them going back and forth between virtual academy and in-person. That probably wouldn't be the way to go.
I do however, like the idea of, one, if we have our migrant families, because we have to count them, because we get money for them. Right, to actually do a kind of a specialized program for our specifically migrant families. So I know at Southport and Matt knows this as well, would often leave because they, they had the season. Right, that, that's something you might want to think about. Right, as a carve-out for migrant programs specifically.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And that's kind of where I was going with it too. It's not necessarily jumping, but how do we now feel that? I mean, it was genuinely, it was a month that I have. And, and you know, a third grader isn't going to stay, you know, we're going. And that's just the, it's the norm. And I can tell you, it's, it's the norm. So and I'm not just talking about that, but, but also, you know, if, if it is a specialized and we know now being in this position to where how do we use our technology to really inform and really engage, continue to engage? Because there's a huge disengagement and then we see the learning loss and, and we've been seeing it for years, right? And then, you know, same students that maybe end up in summer school, having to go to after-school intervention. And it's just kind of a catch-up game from there. I'm telling you as a, as a.
I know you guys know, but we do have migrant education funding that we really should think about with the new opportunities, the silver lining around this. I know we think about ELLs and they're, they're captured in that, but I, you raised a actually really good conversation about the new technology that we have and whether or not we can actually tailor a program for our migrant families that meets the needs from a trauma-informed compassionate system lens to meet the needs of families. Because at the end of the day, they would just, and the independence agency didn't work for them, right? So just, I think that's actually a really good and thoughtful suggestion for our migrant families. And I think they're small enough in number to think about, especially if we're going to do a virtual academy for a little bit.
So definitely adding a, adding a virtual component does offer up possibilities that we didn't have before. So that's a really good idea. So we'll definitely take that feedback into the plan.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, the other, the other piece would just be an encouragement around, you, you, you were talking about it earlier. You know, attracting, attracting those internships, right? Really putting emphasis in, in promoting that area. Because you know, the relationships with the colleges or the community colleges. Knowing, you know, knowing recruitment is the real thing and, and really putting an emphasis on that. I would totally be for that. And that's really, that's really it, that's really it. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Trustee Pizzotti, or sorry, Board President Pizzotti, just as somebody who's listening in, it's really hard to hear you. When you're speaking, you're kind of cutting in and out a little.
I, we can't hear the microphone coming through. I can hear you kind of here, but I can hear you. So, and Chisholm, I'm going to allow or allow to talk and unmute your microphone and you should be good to go.
Okay, great, thank you so much. I just wanted to say, first of all, this is a great discussion and I've been really engaged and enjoy listening to all the great dialogue. I wanted to build off of some comments from Dr. Hildreth, Stan and Mr. Venegas. I know the caller earlier talked about some concerns with hiring, even if it's a couple of years. But I think Dr. Hildreth and Stan in particular talked about how, first of all, first and foremost, as a teacher in the community, we have felt the impacts of losing some of those positions. And even if we were to get some positions back just for a few years, that is definitely something I would not want to say no to because we definitely need help in areas providing support for the students that we've been talking about. But I believe Dr. Hildreth and Stan touched on, if we do have more outreach specialists, especially given the percentages that Dr. Hildreth mentioned about the absenteeism for of our schools. If we can start boosting students and attendance, which is directly tied towards our funding, that could, as Stan said, help sustain those positions and being able to support the families that desperately need that support in, in our community. And I really like what Mr. Venegas said about his experience growing up and, and, and leaving, you know, with his family for a month and a half. We experience that every year, sometimes the beginning of the year. They start maybe six weeks late and then even after Christmas. And I can only imagine from a student's perspective, how hard that is to feel like you're kind of not in step with the rest of your, your classmates and, you know, desperately wanting that connection. And this year in particular, I'm at Riverbank and we had some students that did go to Mexico, but they were still able to join because we were virtual at the time. And the teachers were all talking about how this was really a great opportunity that maybe we could continue. So that those students still feel like they are connected, they're still getting educated and feeling part of the community. So, but I just wanted to say, I know that these monies are, are one-time. And some of these positions, there's some concern about funding. But based on what Kylie shared and looking into the future and increasing our enrollment, there's that great potential of being able to provide the support for our, our kids that we need. That was it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Annie. So let's move on to Vice President Wong. What's that?
A comment based on Kirk Van Nagus's comment is that, that's the way we see this, that this is an opportunity for innovation, to think outside of the box. Because some of the things that we, we have to realize is what has been revealed in terms of challenges? We have groups of students who had these challenges before the pandemic. It's just that the pandemic has highlighted that, not only in our district, but across the country. So with these additional funds, it is how do we support the students who, who we now see are experiencing this? But let's not forget, there is a large number of students who had these challenges before. And so this to me is exciting to be able to have additional funding to target students who we have known historically have not received the support that they need. And this fund allows us to, to make, make that up for however long that is. It allows us to tell those students and their families, we see you, you're important. We have the funds, we're looking at our data and those are the points. And, and we're not losing the humanity in what we're trying to do to support our students. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you for that lens and the importance of hearing people's stories. And when we can humanize the experiences that we have had and you as an adult still remember that as how that impacted you as a child. Those are the voices that are going to help inform our plan. Those are the reasons why we had the reopening tours and the listening, the time to listen. And when our parents feel that we're listening and we're hearing their perspective, their perspective is important and valid. Those are also the points that are going to get out into the community about the type of district we are, where it's going to allow people to want to come into a place where they know that their children and their families are top priorities.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Go ahead, Vice President.
Oh, no, 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 how do I follow that? So my, my question is along the same lines, right? So the things that we've learned, even called this week for foster youth who take forever to get transferred and the continuity of education, the idea that we can do an inter-district transfer for a kid who's moved from Yolo to Mono, right? That they continue the education and the connections with the, with a school district and a teacher. That's, that, that's a phenomenal opportunity, right? So we can think about our transitional families, our homeless families, right? There's a carve-out, but we can build on that because they're, they're just military families, right? Who are also transitional, so to at least kind of get that to the end of semester. Because what we know is like, learning loss has been experienced by these transitional families way before the rest of the student population has. Right? And so there's a lot of opportunities to correct that wrong from equity lens to kind of create our transformative conversation. And I know you and I have talked about this a lot, Dr. Hildreth, and I've said it before, like, how do we do things differently? We're not trying to go back to the old ways. What are the things that we are building new that we can re-engage families in a really authentic way? That gets people, you know, kind of reinvested and the tours are just kind of eye-opening. Now with that said, I'm, I'm a numbers person, I know Kylie, I'm sorry. So a couple of questions, your projections, you said that we, our current enrollment is 7,050, 7, 0, 5, 0, correct? So the projections on slide 10 that have 2022, 23 at 7232, does that take into account kids coming back? Or just was the natural decrease from the original projection of 7493?
So let me see if I understand your question, because 2223.
Yeah, so looking at slide number 10, right? If that's helpful for you.
Yeah, I don't, let me see on this, okay.
Or if somebody has a hard copy. Right, so.
The enrollment graph slide.
Yeah, it's, it's the enrollment graph slide. So for our current year, you said we have 7050, right? Last hole, but we had projected 7493.
Correct.
And 2022, 2023 is, which is the cliff, right? Did, did the projections take into account students coming back or that was just based off of?
So this.
Our projections could actually even dip lower?
Yeah, because this was with our estimates before we actually had P2. So I think next year too, when we continue to collect the data and we continue to have the projections include that data of actual data, which is like current year P2, we could see, because I mean, when, when you look at our district average normally being 95, 96%, which is enrollment to ADA. You can already see that looking at 2223 in the following year or 2122, if you do the math, you can see that it's probably not going to be 95%. So it's going to be much lower next year.
Okay, so we're looking at a, a gap that's not 400 students, that actually is possibly 500 between our current funding level?
Yeah.
The 1920, so that's almost a whole school, that's all of Westfield.
Yeah, so I, when I look at our ADA and look at what we're projecting year over year, by the time we take into consideration of the actual cliff, I'm looking at like it hitting like 345 ADA. That's what I'm looking at. But then that was prior to me actually having the P2 data. So, so now that I have that, I think it's important to look at that for, when I do my multi-year projection for adopted budget, just to see what it actually looks like from there.
Okay, so the.
It's going to change again.
Right, and, and again, I, I believe in investments, I believe in, in getting people, but I think we just need to be really transparent about the ADA number and what we're, we're, we're facing. And we're not the only district, yes, we're not. And things are happening in the legislature right now that may change things and buffer that. And 20, and I'm also looking at 2023 because that's when we have to expend all the money, right? And so a little daunting, a little daunting. So we have kind of. So with the $2 million plus ongoing in things that eat, right? It seems like we do have more than enough to cover, float us for the next couple of years with that, even with that funding gap, right? So I'm thinking that if we, if we get funded at 7050 for the next year, right? Like that's still several millions of dollars in the hole. But we're, but we can make that up with the ESAR funding. That's just with current staffing level, right?
So we're still going to be funded, so right now we're in 2021 being funded at prior year. So next year, because our funding level is 7,200, next year we probably in the 2122 year will still be funded at that because that will be our prior funded ADA to the actual current ADA in that year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we're, we're going to get funded on the 2020, our, our, yeah, last year's enrollment.
We'll still.
The higher enrollment.
Yeah, we'll still be funded on the 1920 enrollment.
For next year.
Because of the way it's kind of being held harmless this year and then next year, looking at the greater of the current or prior. So it'll still be funded on the 7210. But it really will be the year of the 2223 when we look at actual 2122 ADA and then actual ADA of 2223.
So the 7210 was, I'm sorry, there is no 7210 on the enrollment history. We have the 1920, you have 7621.
That's actual enrollment.
Right, right, so.
1920.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm trying to follow the, the ADA numbers. Right, so but you're saying currently we're, we're funded at the 7621.
This is.
That's the 19.
So this is enrollment, so we're not funded on enrollment, we're funded on ADA.
Gotcha, 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 so 95%, sorry, the, the, the 5% discount.
Yeah.
Sorry, 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 gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, so the 5% discount. Okay, that's a big, that's a big cliff, but it seems like we have enough ESAR funding to backfill our existing expenditures, right? And we just, you know, we're going to contract negotiations, we have step and column and give a raise, right? So we have enough to cover that.
Yep, and I think.
For now, is what President Pizzotti said.
Yep, for now. And then in the 2223 is really when we start deficit spending. But then that could depend on just contract negotiations this year, what we bring back as far as what's going to affect the unrestricted general fund and then moving forward, so.
But your deficit spending isn't based off of the new staffing.
Correct.
Okay, I just, I just want this full transparency about, about that, that we were already kind of on the cliff, 2022, 23 prior to, prior to the increased staffing, which again, I support. But just, I think full transparency and that we're eyes wide open of what we're looking at. Eyes wide open, right? Like full, like potential entire school, entire Westfield. Right? So that's, and that's okay. I mean, but with that said, the, the silver lining, we do have leverage dollars and as we invest in kind of the student support services. I'm wondering how the conversations are also kind of grading county funds with rescue dollars. The MHSALC funds, like conversations with, with the county around maybe things that we can joint fund. You know, that could build some longevity into at least our social services program, right? That's something that I, I'm thinking about so that we're not. And you know, I, I attended as many town halls as I could, so the infrastructure to that is really important to me because I wouldn't want to hire an, an entire units of social, social emotional support folks. And often that's, that, that's re-traumatizing, right, to the system, to, to people. So that, for that, that's a high priority. With that said, I am wondering as well, even though I'm a school social worker, I think we had this conversation in one of the town halls and I know that you said Dr. Phillips is working on it. Setting aside stipends for, for the interns, to actually social work interns, like psychologists interns, other kind of. I mean, again, we don't like to talk contract, but let's be honest, like contractual work with people who are actually getting their hours and credentials that are, that could actually build longevity into our programming over time. Right? Again, something that I did in Oakland where you had licensed social workers and then they supervised interns for their hours in schools, right, so that the service was always there, right? Alternatively, having contracts with our CBOs like Victor Services. And again, I know that this is an ongoing conversation that you're having with the county because we have the MHSALC funds, but just, I, I just don't want us to work in silos, if you will. And just having a public comment of like, yes, we're investing in this, we also have potential funding and grading that may actually create longevity with outreach workers or social workers, depending on the services that they're providing. And we have to be open to actually doing business slightly differently to get those monies back into our, our, our budget. Does that make sense? And I know more. And I know more kind of on the backend because it's something that we did in Oakland to make sure that we weren't letting go of social workers, but just kind of putting that out there as well, like potential opportunities that we're not doing this in, in silos. So that, that's long term. And, and if that doesn't happen, I am, I'm wondering from staff or Dr. Hildreth, are there things that as we think about transformative compassion education system, things that you, like you're on this list that you're like, we're going to fund it and we're going to find ways to continue to support it?
So the, the outreach and the social worker pieces really are intervention specialists. I mean, really looking, that's why part of it is we're looking at our title dollars because we know that there's some things that we had set aside even for this year, but because we're totally virtual, we weren't able to use those. But if we're talking about really accelerating learning, it's where those direct services that targeting students can, we can really see. One of the things I've talked to the team about is as we're going, you know, bringing on these additional resources through, through, starting with next year is really being able to take stock and say, well, how do we know that this is successful? How do we know that this resource that we're investing is, is giving us what we, we want to see? So we're really going to have to think about those measures of progress monitoring. So it's not just a end of the year, we did it, well, we want to look, you know, on a, a quarterly basis or, or how do we look to see? And, and again, this, it's all about our campaign about the kind of district that we are. Because those are the things that we want to get out to the community, that we made these investments. And here is what we're seeing in terms of our, our student progress and being very clear about that. I think the idea with our social work interns, so we already have that lined up to have an intern for every social worker, but I'm also looking at, we, we're in a educator field shortage in the state, so we have to also think about a grow your own type of program. What is going to attract people who have options to come to Washington Unified? That we invest in, in, in training, we invest in professional growth. We invest in making sure that you have the best resources and tools because when we know that our employees are getting what they need and feeling confident, that is going to show in our classroom spaces. And it's just being very clear, so I think the stipend piece, even though we already have that lined up, like that's just an additional layer of we value what you can do for our students. So thank you for that.
Yeah, no, again, having, having been one of those, like, that's why I was, I was at my class, because they offered a stipend and nobody else did. And so, and as you think about those measures, just thinking about equity and disaggregated data on the progress and, and good, and I know you think about that anyways. One of the primary reasons we hired you, but just kind of equity at different types of levels, right? Disaggregated and presented back to us on, on progress and investments. And I, I think that this, I'm not sure if this was answered, it was answered in a previous, a, a previous board meeting, but chronic, a chronic absentee is statistically defined, but for the purposes of virtual year, you're counting kids who didn't show up. Like, remind me how we're, we're defining chronic absentee in the virtual space again? I know you did it once, sorry, you had to repeat yourself, but I just wanted to recall what that was. But was it like they, they showed up and they didn't come back? They were counted up, I wasn't sure how, I don't, I don't recall, I apologize.
Yeah, I have the exact wording in front of me, I can look it up. But basically, these are students that are not just absent, you know, once in a while. These are, these are students that are absent frequently, so they meet a certain threshold of being absent very frequently during, and I can't remember the exact percentage breakdown of how frequent that is, I'll have to look that up. But these are, these aren't just any students that are absent. This is, this is your regular absentee rate of the school. These are students that are frequent flyers when it comes to absenteeism.
Right, but I think for the virtual space, I think we, I think you asked it, President Soddy, like how, how you were, how we're actually counting, like if they're logging in and they don't log in the afternoon, are we counting them as present?
I see, I'm sorry, okay, now I understand, yeah, gotcha.
10 days, whatever, or.
Yeah.
Remember, I, I always say I got a chronic absenteeism letter when I went to, took my kids to DC. So, though they learned a lot.
Good, I'm glad the system was working then. But, so basically, if students are at any point in that lesson, if they are with their teacher virtually, even if it's not the full time of the lesson, but if they are on a screen, they get counted as being part of that classroom. So that was put in effect largely because of the concerns of technology, because we knew that people would go in and out of technology. And so it wasn't like you, they didn't want people just to be maintaining it the whole time because they knew families were going to be in very different situations. Particularly when you look back at what was happening last March, when we first got into this, you know? And so when they came up, they were really looking at that experience. So in our case, if students are logged or into the class at any portion of it, they get counted as being a part of the classroom for attendance purposes.
Yeah.
They also can, if they are not, for whatever reason, they might have been able, something may have happened because a home setting, different things can happen, the technology could blow up and they could never get back on. So as long as they're able to reconnect either in some way through the school directly with their classroom teacher, they can still also make up that attendance that way. So, so there, there were different things that were very helping students get, stay attending.
Yeah, I was just trying to think, like when we said four schools, like that, I just wanted to be reminded of the chronic absenteeism with it, in the virtual space, so, okay, gotcha.
And I, and I also want to point out, going back to something Dr. Hildreth said earlier, the, the schools that she mentioned, those percentages were current based to this year. However, if we look back in our data for our district, we'll notice that those same four schools have had a very high percentage above 10%. What we consider being too, is overly high chronic absenteeism. Anything over 10% is, is not considered good, so.
I hide my face now.
I know, you don't have.
No, we're all excused.
Anything over 10%, I should say. So, you know, those, those four, four particular schools, we, we think this is a long-term issue. And so hopefully with some of this investment, we can improve the capacity of the community and so that this will improve long range too, not just fixing a problem by threats and you got this letter and you better show up to class or else, which might be a short-term fix. But we're hoping that we can do some things with our staff and with that community that will build, that will build the capacity so long-term, the attendance rates at those particular schools will improve long range.
And, and which leads me to kind of my final question of like the PD and whether or not we have, and I'm sure you have a list of folks focused on, I just, I don't want it to miss the equity training that we committed to a long time ago, that, that the opportunity is probably now. Within that calm informed lens, I'm learning so much in my new job about how structural systems of inequities, racism act, the impact, learning and ACEs. So would love to just invest more of that. And, you know, and that's, that's great one-time use, right? And to, to a degree, as we think about like, I see you all, we all see you all, you guys are stressed out. Are there ways to alleviate the workload for everybody, right? In, in ways that make sense? And I would, I mean, I don't know about other bonus, but we'd be, would be open to kind of short-term contracting to alleviate, like some of this is just planning, right? Facilitation and planning that I like, you know, the virtual academy or whatever. I, I'll put that on the table, I don't know where other people are thinking, but with one-time monies, it makes a lot of good sense to actually have, just like we did with the town hall. Right, so that people can focus on the thing that they were hired to do. And so this, just thing to think about contractually. I'm, I'm open to that because that's good one-time use dollars to my, so that's it. That's it for me, and I know that there's a, Cliff Benegas has to hand up.
What I was going to say is, I'm going to go through, I'm going to ask my questions and then I'm going to go through everybody and I'll let them do their follow-ups because as we ask questions, we tend to jog other questions that, that we tend to slip past that sort of might say, oh yeah, I'd like follow-up on that. Okay, so I have a bunch of little, little tiny questions that may lead into bigger ones. As for the paraprofessionals, does it matter what type of 30 units post-high school they are?
So I will respond, I did put the response in the chat and I will read that. So I would like to respond to Trustee Kirby Gonzalez. For those that are watching, and I made a mistake, it's not 30, it's 48, but the paraeducator requirements are a high school diploma or the equivalent and two years of college or 48 units or an associate's degree, associates of arts and AA or higher, or pass a local assessment of knowledge and skills and assisting in instruction. So these are the requirements. We do conduct local assessments here for those that might need to meet one of these areas or criteria. So in answer to your question, sorry, what was, sorry.
So what's the 30 units, 30 units post-high school that you mentioned? Oh, it says 48 units now.
Right, right, right.
Does it matter what that is in?
It does not, no, it does not. It's helpful if it's in early childhood ECE or child, you know, in education, absolutely. But we've had some, depending on the discipline, come with different units in other areas.
Okay, good, thank you. Let's see, what was next? Okay, you're next, Kylie. So I did the, the math on, on what our enrollment is versus what our, versus what our 2023, 22, 23 numbers is, and it looks like 68, 70 is about 95%. Is about 95% on estimate for ADA. So that's a significant loss. Do you know about ballpark, how much less that's going to be in funding for us? In dollars, not, not just a percentage?
Let me go back to my mute, okay, sorry, I was looking at the enrollment projection. So when we look at our multi-year, because of the decline, we are looking at $3 million is what we figure that amount would be, that would be less in LCFF state aid funding.
Okay, thank you. And I, I just want everybody to be very clear, that's what the cliff looks like. That's a huge cliff. So I wanted everybody to understand what we're, we're really looking at. Okay. They can't hear me. You can't hear me in here?
President Pizzotti, it's cutting in and out, so if you're not in the room with you, it is hard to hear. You were great and now it's going.
And now I'm gone? Okay.
Can you guys hear me now? Great, all right. Okay, can you give me some examples of debt service? On slide 17, it says considerations and concerns debt service. Can you give me an example of what like a big ticket debt service item might be?
Yes, so I have, so our debt service is all of like our COP payments, our QSCAB. So any of the, I think I'm hearing an echo, but it's probably because you're on. Sorry.
There you go.
There we go. I don't think it's muted.
Okay.
Are you muted?
I'm muting, yeah.
Okay, there we go. So those would be our QSCB's, we have our CREB payment, those were the solar debt that we took on and then the COP, which is the cost of the high school. So any of our revenues that we receive for those to offset those payments. So we receive, we have the joint use, facility use with the city, so the rec center. We have developer mitigation revenues that we receive also. So any of those things, anytime they fluctuate significantly, obviously those, the difference would be made up by the general fund. Yeah, so we do have the RDA, so the state, when they sold off the RDA and we had the, the settlement, which I, I know that came to the board, I want to say, back in December. We did receive $1 million that has helped us with that. We haven't actually received those dollars yet, but we're expected to receive some this year and then next, next year as well. So that will help us with our payments that we have for our debt service. But any kind of fluctuation, if we don't receive those dollars, obviously the general fund would have to make the difference up for those payments.
Great, thank you. Oh, maybe this work. On USB, yeah. Sorry, thank you, that would be helpful though. Okay.
What do you have?
Lightning.
Do you care that the budget that we're not there?
No, it's all right, this is, as long as this, as long as everybody can hear me, we're, we're good, right? Okay, I want to quickly jump to the virtual academy. One of the questions that I've been hearing from some of the community members is, will there be a connection to, say, for the, the high school students in the virtual academy or the, the middle school students in a virtual academy? Will there be a connection to the athletic programs where those virtual students can play in maybe their homeschool or whatever, or if there's enough of them, field their own teams? Also, will they be able to participate in VAPA band and theater at the high school if they're high school students? So that's one of the questions that I.
So yes, they would, students who are in the virtual academy can still participate in extracurricular activities like sports at their homeschool. If there's some growth and that could change in the future. But for, for right now, it's envisioned that they would still be able to participate in extracurriculars and still be attached to their homeschool community in those ways. As far as the high school goes, there's also a little bit more, some other possibilities of concurrent enrollment as well. So, meaning that students could be in the virtual academy, but that doesn't mean they couldn't attend some in-person portions of the day at River City High School. Particularly, this is important for things like electives, which if you look at many virtual academies, if you look at the curriculum, their electives are not, are one of the areas where, you know, they may not have all the electives of a comprehensive setting. So in this case, these students who are at River City, who are being virtual, they could actually, if they want to, take part in electives on campus and actually attend them in person since most of those won't be, or many of those won't be virtual, some will.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I got it.
It's a little bit, of course, though, just, just for transparency, K8 concurrent enrollment, it K8's a little bit trickier concept, although, so we haven't quite put that together yet in, in terms of that environment, but for high school, for sure, they could do that.
Great. Now, you mentioned PD and, and, and training. One thing, like I said, is kind of near and dear to me is dyslexia. And is there any, any way we can use some of these funds for training in, you know, dyslexia and tutoring and identification and, you know, maybe not even dyslexia specific, but some other, you know, some other learning issues?
I, I think a big part of this would be about improving literacy in, in the primary grades. So I, I definitely could see that being worked into that component very effectively. So, you know, strategies that improve literacy for students, I think will be one of the more things, well, one of the things at the forefront of our training. We definitely want to reinvest in what we've done with guided reading. We really feel like we've only scratched the surface of that. And so we want to go back and be much more robust about what we've done with, we've done work with guided reading already, but we know we can do a lot more with it going forward.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That's very helpful. Am I still static? How about now? That was good. Oh, man.
We can hear you, there's just static every time you speak, so, I mean.
Okay. Yeah. Is it static even when I, when I, when I don't have this?
There was no static before you put on the headset, um, you were fine, so I think if we want to keep trying what you were doing.
Okay. Such is life. Alright. Onto the staffing portion that I had a question about. We mentioned the two outreach, uh, specialists. Given, given their abilities to help with our, reaching our, our chronically absent, um, do we think two is going to be enough? I mean, I, I'm just curious, we, we, we mentioned two. I'm just thinking that, these are one-time monies, if there's a possibility of, of expanding their usage, so we can try and help get those kids back. You know, that's, that's a way to increase enrollment, so I, I'm just curious, or increase our ADA.
Um, that, that's certainly a possible consideration. Um, we were looking to, um, thinking about, well, what would be the most long-term sustainable? So we were still thinking about sustainability, even though this is one time as much as possible. And, um, one of the benefits of having two more would mean it would guarantee us at least coverage for one per site, um, in the long term, and so that's where we arrived at that number.
Well, that's long-term general fund, right?
Yeah.
I, I'm talking, the, that's kind of a given, the two are a given. I'm thinking in, in addition, an additional one or two for, um, usage out of our ESAR funds or, um, our AB eighty-six money. I- is that possible, or is that?
It is, it certainly is.
It is, okay. And then, um, one of the, um, program specialists for EL. Again, my question is, is that enough? Even if it's just, you know, for a temporary purpose, don't we benefit more by utilizing, you know, maybe an additional, like two or, you know, two-point-five, you know, i- is there, is there any, is there any, I guess, benefit, or should I say, i- i- is there any long-term benefit for that?
I, I would, I would argue yes. Just the fact that two years ago, um, you know, there, there were, there was a coordinator with two TOSAs.
Yeah.
And other personnel and classified staff in that department. So even, even with adding this program specialist, it's still smaller than what it was, um, in previous years. And so, um, you know, we, we had discussed af, asking for another teacher a special assignment, um, to be put into this area as well. So if you're asking, do I think we'd benefit from other added personnel, I would say yes.
I, I'm asking on a temporary basis because these funds are one-time funds. So as long as we go into this acknowledging that this is a limited-term assignment, and realizing at the end of that term, you go back to what you're doing, or there is no more job.
We would benefit, I, I, I do, I do think we would benefit.
Okay, and then one of the other, um, one of the other, uh, I think it's my final question is, student testing for COVID. Now, is there a particular dollar amount that we have set aside for that, or is there, or do we have a ballpark idea of what that's going to run out, out of our, uh, additional revenues?
Norma, I don't know if you have what the cost is for testing, I don't know the exact cost, per student or how that's actually done, but, um, we definitely have the funds in the ESAR two, it falls under ESAR two, ESAR three.
Right.
The in-person instruction grant, so any of those funding sources can sustain that expense.
I will need to get you a figure, I know that we took a contract to the board.
I would just kind of like to have a ballpark figure as to what it is, what's it going to cost? Because that really, we have a lot of things that we want to be able to spend our money on, and I want to make sure that we have room to do that. And, and we want to know, you know, whether or not this is going to eat into a big chunk of it, or a little chunk of it, or how much is it going to be?
Yeah, as far as I understand, the testing, the materials themselves are not costing us, it's the staffing, you can't hear me. It's the staffing to move the.
The staffing, the staff.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was going to say that the tests themselves and working with our, um, providers through my, uh, primary, the tests don't cost, we got, we were able to secure those without cost. However, it's the staffing that we will need to fund to make sure that we can provide that testing service.
That's why I asked you if you wanted to.
I didn't know, thank you.
Cause they've been in my ears.
Okay, let's see if this is.
We have a brother-sister relationship.
Right? I don't mind your cooties. Okay. Can you hear me now? Hey, alright.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, I appreciate. Everybody's patience with my, uh, headset situation. I'm going to go back through and ask any of the board members, uh, if they had, um, any more questions. I know Clerk Vanegas had, uh, his hand raised, so Clerk Vanegas.
Um, yeah, thank you, thank you. Um, I, I've just got one thing, I think, um, in, in, in our meetings and, you know, and I, and I hear you, Dr. Hildreth, and, and, you know, really looking at the equity lens, really looking at holistic, um, and transformational education, and, um, I, I, I'm thinking to myself, you know, what does every student at Washington Unified get? You know, like the idea of wraparound services, um, the idea of every student having a mentor, every student having, especially now with the virtual option, where you can mentor remotely, right? You can do a check-in, um, almost keeping a pulse on those students, and, and not necessarily just certain students, but let's say from the sixth grade up or from the fifth grade up, every student, uh, receives a mentor, uh, and somehow we incorporate that into our seniors and our juniors doing some of that mentoring. Even if they do get a work permit, as an example, um, for them to start making, uh, potentially some, some, some income or a stipend. Because now, you know, as a senior, the idea, at least for myself, I, I worked as a senior. Um, and I can, you know, I had to get a four-hour, five-hour job. Well, now, if I can, and I didn't have a car, so it was constantly a challenge, uh, to, to support and help my family out. So now, our, you know, our seniors being able to potentially even be some of those mentors as we build it out, because I think that the importance in re-engaging is going to be, is going to be critical. There's a window that we're, we, we can potentially lose even more students because they're re-engaging. There's going to be the awkwardness, there's going to be all of that happening, the fear is still relevant. I think giving, you know, some of our staff, even the opportunity to work, like I said, another hour or two virtually if they choose to. Uh, but it, but what would a, what would a district look like when, you know, when every student has, uh, a, a mentor that is not a teacher, that we're not putting more on the teacher to do the SEL component, to do the healthy culture component? You know, the, the students that play sports have a coach, they have an outlet. The, the, the students that are in extracurricular activities are, are able to have someone else, a trusted adult. We know when students have a trusted adult, they're more likely to show up to campus. Um, so how, how can we really use the idea of every student having a mentor and incorporating job opportunities, um, as a program, as an initiative for our seniors, um, that have that work permit to be able to, continue their education and, and, and also have a, have an opportunity to not only make an impact, but also have a, have a job. That'd be something that I'd like to, 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 to explore.
I think that's a, a great idea, especially as we are, we have also heard from our county and city partners about wanting to do things with us. So as you said, not the intent to put more on our, our teachers or our current staff, but is bringing the community into the schools and creating a full community-school type of, of model. And I think that's really one of the things you're speaking to about community schools, which is becoming more and more of, using the community, the, the school is the center of the community, where we have those resources and thinking about, job opportunities, but that's again, exactly the conversations we've been having at our Yolo County Superintendent's meeting, what the county is looking into. When, uh, Vice President Wong and President Pazati and Trustee Kirby Gonzalez have attended the city two-by-two and the county two-by-tos, those are the discussions. So I, it, it's a matter of, yes, I think that it is something that we can do, it's just, let's map it out, what would that look like? So we have something to present or propose to our county and city partners.
Great, thank you Clerk Vanegas. Uh, Trustee Kirby Gonzalez, did you have any follow-up?
I do, thank you, and, um, this was all such a good, um, discussion and so timely, I appreciated all of it. A student I've been working with all year for extra reading support just left this week to go back to Afghanistan for the rest of the school year, won't be here this summer either. So I think exactly about what you talked about, how do we then tap in and support our students, um, when they come back in August, if they are away? Or, or whenever they, um, are gone. Um, a- as I think about this, I want to make sure I really understand, um, since this is discussion and I know the plan. Uh, this is about two million dollars and it's only, um, some staffing pieces. So is the idea that this is one part, and then you're going to take the information from the listening session to then bring us another phase? More like, I don't know, I had seniors and I had first graders ask for, um, therapy dogs. Uh, but will we be talking about other type of enrichment or outdoor spaces? Or what, what does this conversation look like in the continuum as you make plans? Is, is I guess my question to know my follow-up.
You, you're right, this is really just part of the, the staffing components to see, um, to share with the trustees what we're thinking, to get your input, incorporate that with what we hear, heard on the reopening tour. And when we, uh, present the AB eighty-six draft plan, that will also show the expenditures for the items that we're proposing that are not related to staff. So this was to give you overall, this is the budget, this is how much in the different funding streams. And of that, what are we talking about for staffing? And again, just getting the idea, because it is then about being able to post, uh, positions, because we know that all of our, the other districts, uh, not only around us, but in the state, are following the same guidelines. So we're just trying to get ahead to make sure we have the largest pool possible. But know that the, the rest of the plan expenditures will be coming in the actual eighty, AB eighty-six proposal that is brought forward. And we're looking to bring that first draft, mm, Thursday, the thirteenth.
Oh, okay, perfect, so then I'll just stick only to the, um, HR piece and the hiring, and I will, um, just, um, add to what was already said in terms of support of, if you need temporary positions, maybe they're not fully, you know, going out and hiring, for a contract, for a contract, but a temporary, say, HR needs a temporary person to get us to August. Um, say you need a temporary person, maybe there's, you know, someone who's retired that wants to come in and help get the virtual academy off the ground. I mean, I know that everyone, um, in the district's office and across the board is worked to capacity. And so if there are ways that we can use this money, um, for as I believe, uh, it was Vice President Wong talked about with some of those temporary, um, pieces, I'm fully in support of that, um, to help, to help get this during, get all this off the ground. And, um, that's my only piece then, there, thank you.
Trustee Kirby Gonzalez, Trustee Barnes, did you have anything else? You're muted.
But I'm not, but I, but I did turn off the echo. I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Hildreth when you talked about the, uh, specialists, the EL specialists, uh, helping with DI as well. And then I also, um, President Pazati mentioned having more than one, that was a thought that I had. So just know that I also support that because I am really concerned, um, still, even with our summer boost. So I'm, another reason I was asking about getting out there now and getting hiring since we have the funds, sounds like we don't have the staff. So, um, sooner, sooner rather than later on that would be great, but thank you for recognizing the DI program. Um, and then, this is maybe a really silly question, but have, for VAPA, have we considered, like, do we need extra PPE or extra stuff in the room? So that that can actually go on? Like, I'm thinking of band practice or choir, are, are we using any funding for, like, I don't even know what that looks like from a county health perspective, but I'm, I, I want to be sure that we don't get caught later going, oh, we can't have, choir or band practice now because you're, you know, singing or playing. So we're, we, we've covered those bases, I hope.
So far we have, um, but that doesn't mean that down the road, um, you know, I think one of the slides that, um, Assistant Superintendent Gonzalez had mentioned that some of this can be adjusted based on needs that happen into next year. So, um, we, we, it doesn't mean that additional, um, I'm just going to classify that as PPE, type-related types of, uh, material. This funding can be used to, um, make sure and sustain those needs next year as well. If, um, should we be, you know, uh, foreseeable, we could be, uh, it, it's very foreseeable that we will still have those needs next year, even being in person.
Great, thank you, Trustee Barnes, Vice President Wong.
Just want to, just thank all staff for kind of, um, bearing with us through, through this and kind of the, the rapid planning, so appreciate that. My question, my last question, and then it's probably going to be answered later, is, let's think about a way to fold this plan into the LCAP. In the future, right, as I look over to Stephanie, like. Um, and I, that, let's not make, and just to make sure that it's a continuous plan, it might be a four-year plan, a five-year plan, but really just, like, we just shouldn't start over, so that's why I was asking, like, what are the pieces that we want to forever keep? And think about that in the long-term plan that we didn't, in equity, so, um, I'm sure that's happening concurrently. Um, and then we have measures in that, but, um, yeah, that's, that, that's the last piece of that, so.
I want to say that's a great idea, thank you for bringing that up.
Sometimes I have great ideas.
You have phenomenal ideas all the time, Jackie. I simply just wanted to say thank you to everybody on producing this, uh, very thorough presentation, which I'm sure took a great deal of time and staff hours. And I know you're still working very hard and feverishly on doing the hiring and, 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 uh, getting everything put together for our, our, our plan and our reopening, our virtual academy, and all the things that are moving at a hundred miles an hour right now in this district. So I want you to all know, uh, you have my gratitude and thank you for everything you do for our kids. It's so greatly appreciated. Did anyone have any more comments, Superintendent Hildreth? Uh, Norma, Stan, Kylie, Stephanie, Terry, anyone?
Well, I just want to take the time to, again, uh, thank, thank trustees for your support of our students. I mean, it starts with the direction that you set, where you're always making your comments focused in equity, which gives us the, uh, confidence to move forward, that, that we're doing the right thing for all of the students in our district. And I also want to take the time to appreciate all of our staff, esp, you know, our, our team here, but the, the team behind the scenes as well, for, uh, being those thinkers, being the problem solvers, attending all of the reopening town halls to make sure that we hear, not just, it's not just me hearing it, it's the whole team hearing it. And knowing that everything that our community is telling us is going to be something that we can improve upon. Because that's really what it's about, it, it's about our students. And so when we stay committed to. It's about our students. And so when we stay committed to having student-centered conversations, I think that is when we bring our best selves to our work, which then shows in the classroom. So just thank you all for your support.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Hildreth. It looks as though we have reached our end of our agenda, so we shall adjourn. And we no, no longer need a motion to adjourn, so not that we ever did, I guess. It was good seeing everyone, and thank you. Have a good night.